Do we have a minister present? Okay. Join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, we would like to move the ambulance repairs item down to the study session because we have a different proposal to present to you tonight, something other than what was in your packets, so we'll explore that with you a little bit. Instead, other than that, the agenda is as you find it.
Yeah, I think it's already on there.
Well, you have a lot of them.
Apparently, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, let's start with approval of the minutes. Which, I don't have any minutes.
Oh.
I just noticed that.
I just don't, I guess that you and the minister didn't make the packet. Well, I apologize for that, and I didn't notice it until this.
I didn't even miss it until right now.
Okay. So, we'll see if we can retrieve the minutes from Stacy's computer. I don't know why they didn't make the packet, but she hasn't been here today, and so we'll see if Amber thinks she can get them. So I apologize for the shortage.
Can we move on then to financial matters? Okay, let's move on then and do financial matters. Appropriation ordinance number 16.
A question on 63-509, reimbursement for 429 West Fifth Street for $8,000.
That is the Wells Fargo house?
Mm-hmm.
Where Wells Fargo gave us the house and gave us $8,000 with it, and then we sold it on the condition that that money would accompany the house, but the buyer had to show us that they had spent it on improvements to the house.
Okay, very good.
So that's all been completed, so that's what that's all about.
Okay, great. Great. So it's on the tax rolls now, huh?
It's on the tax roll.
Plus $8,000. And I have another question, 63-533, Lincoln Township overpayment.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened. I don't know the mechanics behind it, but that's for ambulance. Several townships outside the county, including Lincoln Township, subscribe to our ambulance service, and there's a contract they sign every year, they've all been signed this year, and we pay them, we charge them in an amount that's calculated to, as a whole, for all the townships, roughly equate to what the individual taxpayers in the city have to pay. So it's several thousand dollars, or, and there's, what was the refund there, $800? So for some reason, they paid us twice or something, I don't know exactly what the mechanics were.
Thank you.
But that's where it came from, it was an ambulance payment, apparently they overpaid it.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Maybe we can take the minutes and allow Commissioner Stanley to...
Why don't we, can we go ahead and finish up the appropriation ordinance number 16 before we move on to the minutes? Does anybody have anything else?
We'll move to accept.
Second.
It's been moved by Sam, seconded by Chuck, that we accept appropriate, or approve appropriation ordinance number 16. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. And we'll take a moment to look over the minutes.
I noticed in the public comments about the state's participation doesn't state that we agreed to reimburse them.
I think that would come later on.
Yeah, that would be...
Oh, did it? Yes, okay, sorry. This is a...
The manager's report. I would move to approve the minutes of the Wednesday, August 17th, 2016 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the August 17th, 2016 meeting. Before we vote, were you hear that? Okay, were you, okay. Any further discussion?
It's just my name is misspelled.
Yes.
But that's all right. A D was added to it on the ordinance 2016-3113. Just get the white out of that one.
So we'll make that correction again.
You bet.
Okay.
Yes.
So, all those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. And now we're on track, we're ready for public comments. If there's anyone who wishes to address the commission, this would be the time to do so. Close public comments and move on to new business, the water tower painting contracts.
This matter has been before you, several study sessions, and is now on requesting action on your part. If you'll go to the page before that, please. We put out specifications asking for bids to repaint the West Water Tower and received five bids, as shown here. We do have a local vendor bidding, as you can see, however, the difference in cost between the local vendor and the low vendor is appreciable. I think under the city purchasing guidelines, the staff following those recommends that we accept a low bid from utility service company, except that that is not exactly what we intend to do with them in terms of the bid for the tank. Rather, as we have discussed with you, they have proposed to us an ongoing service contract for both tanks that would, for approximately the same money as it works out, paint that tank in the very near future, and down the road, a couple of years, paint the other tank, and going on from there, in payment of a fixed sum every year, they would take care of both of our tanks, repainting them at least every 10 years on the outside, every 15 years on the inside. Their representative is here this evening. I don't know, I don't see our payment schedule in the...
It's kind of under two.
Contact price and annual fees.
Okay, it's got, oh, it does, you're right, it's, they just spelled it out there. We had, shown you visuals of a year-by-year schedule, but you're right, it's in paragraph two there, the fees that are, can be paid annually, and they start off a little higher for several years to pay for the initial work being done now, and after that, they drop down to an lower figure, continue in perpetuity. This country does this in perpetuity, it's not quite right, until either side decides to cancel a contract, we can cancel it at any time. This company specializes in these arrangements, has numerous cities across the country that they deal with. We contacted some of the local ones and got very good reports on their service. If you have further questions.
So are we actually tied in for a certain number of years?
Nine years.
Nine years?
Technically, you're not, and technically, it's just a, it's a one-year agreement, automatic renewals if you make a payment. However, if we come and do the, you know, the $177,000 renovation, and you were to cancel next year, you would owe us the remaining balance of that.
Right.
For that renovation.
Okay.
But as far as the future annual maintenance program portion of it, it's an annual agreement. So as long as you're in that program, you make your annual payments, we're responsible for the maintenance, but you have the option to cancel every year if you want to.
And just for, for the sake of interest, has it, it says that it would be capped, the annual increase would be capped at 5%. Is that what it has usually been for other?
No, it's usually about 3.5%.
Okay, so that's just the cap.
Tight to CPI, then, or?
Uh, no, no, it's just, it's set, basically, it just, we put a cap, or it can't go up or down more than 5%, is how we set it up.
And then what, like the company, board of directors, or just the company decides what percentage is going to be?
Uh, I think pretty standard is set at about 3.5% per year, for the typical cost of inflation, you know, even, yeah, I mean, even with the economy or something being down, you know, the price of paints, though, it can usually go up every year, and so basically, pretty much set it as standard 3.5%.
So the motion that we would want would be for $51,475 per contract year 2017? Is that what we talked about?
I think perhaps the appropriate motion would be to include, to approve the water maintenance contract, water tank maintenance contracts for two different contracts, one for the East Tower and one for the West Tower.
Okay.
Can we do that all in one motion?
I've got a question. At 5%, up to a max cap, 5%, is that based off the $21,687?
That is based off of the, the first, the actual maintenance program, once you drop down, so it'd be 5% of the, yeah, the $24,000 on that thing.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what'd be, and then it'd go every year after that?
Correct.
So it'd be 24, let's say it goes up 3%, and then the next year, 3% on that figure and the whole thing?
Correct.
Okay, so the further out we get, it goes up, but we're still getting better than the start?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion, we accept the contract for the West and East. Shall we just combine them together there?
With utilities.
Fifty-one.
Yeah, what's the...
Yes, I think if the motion is to accept the contracts of utility service company named for service on our East and West Water Towers.
Yeah.
Second.
That'd be for $56,518.
Initial payment.
Initial payment.
Initial payment. But as the contract states out, on the, on the, it's on a different reason for the two of them.
Contracting.
On the West Tower, the amount is $51,475. East Tower is the one that is quoted, I don't know.
It's a third, that's not a third.
We basically...
We don't need the amounts, that's a good thing.
Because it's an installment contract, and the terms of each of them vary slightly depending on the schedule, the, there's higher front end payment on the West Tower, because that's the one they're going to pay immediately, the lower front end payment on the East Tower, but they're not going to pay that until...
So that's why there, it's just $2,000 a year for the first.
Start off on that.
Okay. Okay, it's...
When they pay that, it'll be a pretty tough one, those go up, the first time, also.
All right. It's been moved by Sam and seconded by Tim that we accept the contract with utility service company for the East and West Water Tower maintenance. There further discussion?
Just publicly, I want to, we did contact our local guys and...
We went back to them, asked if they would care to reconsider, and they did, but they weren't able to.
Okay, so they had the, they had their chance, okay, very good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to the dispatch equipment upgrades.
I'll let the chief explain what we're doing here, we'll get on the contract.
Mayor Commissioners, we've had several conference calls with representatives from the 911 Council, AT&amp;T, and other vendors on the next generation 911 project. We've already put in a new voice recorder, but we've changed some of the configurations. That is going to require a digital card and digital license in the amount of $7,572, and that is approved expenditure to come out of the 911 funding, so no city funds will be involved.
Those are good ones.
I wanted to know if this is a legal and binding contract, and an example for us all, this is a total contract here, it's got the buyer, the seller, the item, the terms and conditions, and that's it, one page, so, I'm sorry, we can't bring you more than if I can. So I would request a motion accepting the Voice Products Inc. contract for each channel hardware and channel license and installation in the amount of $7,572.
I'd say move.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Chuck and seconded by Sam that we accept the contract with Voice Products Inc. in the amount of $7,572. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay. The Broadway Plaza charging station.
This is an item that's been particularly mentioned as something that interested the Commissioners. For the first item, this is an invoice ready from Hoods Electric for two items. The first one is for two spotlights for the stage area. That's something that had pretty much been in the plans all the way along, but it never made into anybody's bid, and it's pretty important to us, I just wanted to ask those to get installed before Fall Fest. And where these would go is atop those poles that have the speakers on them, and they'd be rotated around, but basically, they'd be aiming at the stage, so for any act or show that had an evening deal and didn't show up with their own equipment for lighting, then this would provide lighting for the stage. So these are all weather LED lights of a pretty high grade of quality, and you switch them on and off in the control, and they'll have them installed by Fall Fest, as far as I know, they'll probably be in use that evening. But the one that I was bringing to your attention, we really, is something extra, is the outdoor charging station. They sent us some pictures of it, and there are prices for a three-gang outdoor power pedestal, and I think they're talking probably, I'm going to skip over to, there's a picture that shows three of them, it's kind of in a row, keep going, there, okay, and go over to the right, and pull it up as big as you can on the green there, three-gang options there, so I think we would be buying, I guess, GFCI outlet, that's your basic plug-in, right? So one standard plug-in and three USB charging ports in a pedestal of the type, if you want to slip over back to the other side of that picture, probably the little one there. So we would have one of those sticking up somewhere, not sure where on the plaza we would put it, but if you decide to go ahead with it, then we would, we were actually having a meeting next Monday morning, probably sometime next week in any event, with the contractor and the electrical contractor to kind of go over all the controls and everything, so we could work out where it could be placed without having to, fitting into our current warrant scheme and knocking it away.
Does this really fit into the overall look of whatever of the plaza?
That kind of looks, you know, it's kind of a little black tower-y thing, so, kind of does.
Up tall.
So, I, good question, is there a dimension?
Thirty-four inches.
Yeah, there you go, so, like that. So I could see it sticking over by the bathroom somewhere, maybe, I'm not sure where it'd end up, but...
They're going to have to tear any grass up?
No, we wouldn't want to tear up any, we certainly wouldn't want to tear up any cement. We might have to take out a little corner of grass to put in, I don't know, or we might be able to plunk it right down on cement that we have. So, you know, we wouldn't want to get into any big expense for insulation, nor has it ever been a part of our plans, but it sort of kind of got mentioned, and there was interest on the part of the commission, so I set on track it down. I only want to, to one contractor on this because Hoods is the contractor that's done all the electric over there, so they know where, I mean, I thought it might be kind of hard to go to somebody else.
Did the committee have a chance to think about this, or?
Kind of, excuse me, I thought you were looking past me. Do we have, oh, there's a committee representative. Pardon me, I've talked about it some.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, what's your question?
What's his purpose?
The charging station?
Yeah. I mean, what are they going to be used, I mean, and how do they fit in?
Charge up your phone.
Well, yeah. But I mean, I've got, we don't want to spend money, so people don't go charge their phone up. I mean, how does it fit in with the plaza?
I think Toby mentioned to us, Royal Stadium installed a bunch of these.
Yeah, I mean, any, any place, any gathering spot now, you see a lot of these anymore. And sporting stadiums are the big one, and you'll see charging stadiums, charging stations up all over the stadium, and people there plugging their phones in and...
Last time we were in the airport, we had breakfast, and both of us were charging at the same time while we're eating breakfast and stuff.
Fits into kind of the philosophy of a multi-use public venue, it's one more use, and down there.
I can see, I can see like an example being Fall Fest, where you're going to have a lot of people that are in town, and a lot of people that are away from home, or away from where they would typically plug in devices, that would be there, you know, for a long period of time.
So they stand there, they stand there for an hour while they charge their phone.
Sure.
Now, so, whether it's a good idea, and I don't know how long it takes one of these to charge, but I noticed it doesn't have a cord, so...
No, you have to bring your own cord.
Unfroded cord, yeah.
Because guess what would get ripped off?
We're not going to furnish the cord.
Yes, exactly. So we can do it or not do it, either way, it was something that I said that God mentioned you had kind of showed some interest, so there it was.
Where would the money come out of, Larry?
Well, we're probably spending more of next year's TIF money, so, on this, so...
If the purpose is to get people downtown, is this going to do it? I mean, is this a part of the whole big picture?
I think it would probably bring people to the plaza for that purpose, honestly, I do.
Just to charge the phone.
Sit down and drink a cup of coffee while it's...
Unless you've been in an airport lately, you know, because that, that is something, that's the first thing that a lot of people look for, is they are getting off, yep, is charge your phone.
Off the airport, they're going to get on a plane, and they're going to fly out, there's a purpose of the fit. I mean, I gotta put it this way, I don't believe people go to the airport just so they can charge their phone and then go back home.
I think that people, well, no, they're not going to go back home, but I think it'll keep people...
But they use what's available.
To get anecdotal.
People, people will keep, you will keep people there to charge, if their phone needs to be charged.
I was at my daughter's wedding this spring, big, in a kind of a meeting hall place in Portland, there was one place over that had a phone charger, busy all afternoon.
Yep.
You know, people were taking pictures while they were there, and so we're having an event, like a wedding, people are taking pictures while we're there, whoops, my phone's running out, you go and charge it up, so that was the experience.
Yeah, I think people would leave to go home and charge their phone, they may or may not come back.
To me, I think that on the surface, this is something that's not going to necessarily attract people there, but I think it's an amenity that will, that will add to the overall presence of the plaza. I think it's something that, you know, I can, I can appreciate the, the question about spending $2,200 for basically three outlets, four outlets to charge a phone, but I, but I think it is something that people look for, and I think it's something that, that is, it's kind of a standard that people are wanting to have, and I guess, I think if we had exposed out, which I guess I don't know, and I probably should know because we've seen it, I mean, I don't know how many exposed outlets are currently, are there, are there any exposed outlets? Yeah.
We have, we have, there's a set of plug-ins on the east side of the plaza, about in the middle distance, inside the fence, that have six, I think, dual plug-in outlets, and then one heavy-duty one in there, but no charging station, just...
No, but if they have their wallet...
Well, we could also switch one of those outlets, too.
Yeah, could we, yeah, maybe so.
I, I could. Not certified, I'm not...
Let's go with your question on that. How many people could charge their phone at once on one outlet?
One, I mean...
There's three on here.
So each of them have one outlet?
So there's one of these, the, one of these posts, like the short one there, and it's got a little flip-up box and...
Right, only one phone at a time?
And there's three USB boxes.
Oh, three, yes, okay, three.
And then there's a plug-in, plug-in, also.
Well, you know, I think, maybe it's a generational thing, but if this is, this is going to, you know, keep people there, go get their cup of coffee, and, you know, and if that's what we want, it to be a gathering place, then I see a good purpose for it.
I kind of, you know, we're guessing on some of this, but we have had enough interest in the use of it that we're optimistic about renting it for five occasions, so it's one thing to toss in there, and oh, by the way, we have a charger over here, so...
A friend of mine on Facebook posted from an airplane, I think it was Mountain Hood, coming up through the clouds, and then her second picture was the charging station on the plane, and to her, it was a big deal, and it was a person our age. So, you know, it's definitely...
I'm probably quite a bit younger than you, but, just so you know.
I was pointing at Sam and...
Oh, okay.
I guess I could go along with Chuck's reasoning, but you'll never get me to believe people are coming down there just to charge their phone.
But, yeah, yeah.
I don't think it would be that, but I think it's, I think it's an amenity that people will take advantage of, it's not, it's not something that's going to necessarily...
Bring people specifically to, but it's...
It's going to add to the overall...
Well, and I think it also says something about that our city is recognizing the needs of our citizens, and we're in, we're in the 21st century, I mean, that's how I look at it, it's not just that we're doing it for the people, but, but we anticipated that this might be a need that somebody might have. I think for the price, we should go ahead and do it.
The price kind of fits. Now, let's say nine people get their phone charged, the rest of them have to stand and lie?
No, three people will get their phone charged.
There's three of them.
I thought there was three in each.
No, we're just going to get one of these.
Oh, okay.
One, one like the shortest one, is $2,000.
It seems like a lot of money for something. But it, I'm assuming it's durable.
Well, yeah, this design, this is designed for use, I didn't, I didn't pick this one out, it is called the...
And it's waterproof, or, so that water isn't going to...
It's an outdoor pedestal, it's designed for that.
And where would you put it?
I'm not sure, I think, you know, we're going to be meeting with them somewhere there, have to find some place where we can do it relatively conveniently.
What I, and that's exact, I guess, why they put pictures with marketing pieces, is to sell the product, but I do see the folks sitting at the table with their laptops on, I can absolutely see that happening, where people want to get together and then they can, they can plug in their tablet or computer or phone and can work on it as they're sitting on the plaza, which is what we're, what we're designed to do.
People get together, only one of them gets to charge.
No, there's three, so they're all...
Okay, three?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's three.
One pedestal, three, three people can charge.
Okay, then that's a group.
Plus if they, somebody has their outlet.
Yeah, you can plug it in another one, so...
Yes, and they're all smiling, and that's...
Although, although the gal that's sort of out of focus looks like she's smiling too, and we don't know if there's a pedestal there or not, so we...
She's chit-chatting.
Want to draw any causation or correlation there?
There's only two connections on that one.
That's right.
She's waiting pleasantly.
So she's frowning, she ought to get the charge.
I'll fire behind Charles.
Oh, no, she does have a tower, I'm looking, there is a tower back there, that's why she's happy.
Well, we're only going to have one, so...
We might have a clamor for more of these if we start...
Yeah, well, maybe people will donate them.
Maybe put a quarter machine up.
Yeah, that, I like that idea.
Finance it over the next 50 years.
See, the plaza will make money.
Put a quarter in, they charge your phone, I'm for that, I'd even say recommend we buy three of them.
Well, let's, let's get creative with the orphan train statues, you know?
Oh, that's pretty creative.
Maybe not.
I like that, Tim.
Charging stations coming out of the years.
Let's amend the motion.
That was totally tongue-in-cheek.
I think that if, if that's a possibility, that won't be in anything, in the way of anything else.
Yeah, I, you know, I'll be honest with you, I don't really like the price of it, I think that seems awful high, but I think that it is, you know, like, like we're saying, it's not going to bring people specifically there, but it will probably keep people there.
If we were going indoors, we could get something much, much cheaper, but the only place we could do that would be the bathrooms, and I'm not sure that's...
When people are sitting on the pot, where they can charge their phone.
Quick charge.
Oh, my gosh.
There you go.
I think this is way classier.
I do like the lights, though.
I, why, that's probably a more expensive model, but this is the... I, why, that's probably a more expensive model, but this is the least, it's gonna be one of the working models.
Are you talking about the...
No, I'm talking about the lights.
The spotlights?
Yeah, I do like those.
Yes, thank you about the lights.
Yes, I like the lights.
We need to have those.
Totally.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion, then?
Motion to accept bid for charging station?
Charging station and the lights, or we already...
I've already ordered those, I...
Okay.
Toby, do you think that that, as, as part of the design committee, I guess, do you think that that, the outlets that are currently in place, would that serve this purpose?
No, I don't think so.
Because?
I think, I think you want something like this, and with the USB ports. And to use an example, another place I've seen this is in student unions at colleges. And so, last spring, I've been teaching up in the cloud, and I took a group of sports broadcasting students down to Portia State. And when we broke for lunch, every single kid was plugging into, but it is, they bring their cord, and they know that it's that USB is what they need to plug into, and I don't know that...
But if we could, if we could switch one of those outlets to a USB?
I mean, I don't know, but I think, I think if you're wanting to put this in a place where people gather, you're not gonna have that by putting it into the existing outlets, so. I mean, I guess it depends on the functionality of it, so.
I just don't have, I don't have a good picture in my mind of where it is, but if, that's what I was, if we can accomplish this with just replacing an outlet, but if, but if the placement of that isn't conducive to the...
Yeah, I don't think it is based on where it is now.
The outlets are against the east side fence, development of...
Yeah, and, you know, it'd probably have to be somewhere over by the concession area without it being in the way of the concession area, if that makes sense.
I mean, I think people would be there for their phones, but I think it would be brief, just to get a quick charge out of it. But I think you will see people doing this, and especially if you have Wi-Fi there, that people can just sit down.
Once we do the Wi-Fi's engaged, you can do the Wi-Fi.
So I think that's a...
And that's a limited time, right?
We haven't got that set up yet as far as the time it's working now, but we have to sort that out.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually, I could see this, if we had one table, it was secure, and you had it next to the table, that people could sit around.
Well, we have ordered, I think I mentioned to you in the recent memo, in addition to the chairs and tables, the little tables are over there, we've ordered two tables, kind of about that size, and kind of set up chairs for them. So there's gonna be two of those there, we could find a place for one of those.
Yeah, I totally agree with saying...
Pretty much what it looks like in the picture, just like you're seeing there.
Although, yeah, it just, you know, if we were talking a real good price of maybe three or four, and we have them stationed around, then I could understand it, but we're talking, you know, the Plaza is filled with people, and we have this one thing sticking up in the ground for someone to charge their phones. I mean, it's just hard for me to see the fit on the whole thing, or really the purpose for just one of them, and we can't afford anymore. And the fact is, because they should be stationed around, that I'll go with, because then people are gathering, and they have lunch, you got different people sitting at tables, so they got their computers in the summer, that I could understand. But just to have one, I just don't, I just don't see the fit, and that's, that's the main problem I got with it.
Well, one's a starting place, if this really takes off, and we get people that are saying, hey, we need more, next year's budget's tight, but we would wait till then and say, yeah. Yeah, they're both valid points.
They are, well, both are, but we could just get this one and see how it goes. We have people in line there, and maybe we can sell them something while they're standing.
Right across the street.
Well, I move that we approve the bid for the charging station.
You tired of talking about this, Kristi?
Yeah, I think we've done it.
I'll second.
It's been moved by seconded, moved by Kristi, and seconded by Tim, that we approve the Broadway Plaza charging station. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay, I just can't do it.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to the runway overlay contract.
Do we need to approve the lights?
Oh, it's already been ordered.
Okay, I heard him say that, but...
I think we already probably...
You don't feel too bad. The other day, I told him to watch out for the floor on the ground.
Oh.
Are we ready for the next item?
Yes, we are.
And the next item being the runway overlay contract. Contract documents themselves, which were in your packet, were prepared by the engineers, I reviewed them, found them to be within the norms. If you have any questions, we can go there in a moment, but this is a, this memo, which I sent you after the bids, states where we are on this. Bids were opened two weeks ago, and the low, we had two bids, one from Hall Brothers and one from APAC, both of whom were contractors, have done good work for the city in the past. APAC most recently did the water line on Sixth Street from Broadway to the highway. And their bid was three hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty cents. This is for an overlay of the runway at the airport. The project is being paid for ninety percent by KDOT, ten percent by the city, except that the city pays one hundred percent of the design. And the breakdown is, in this area, there are five charging items on this project, construction, design, bidding, construction engineering, engineering and project management. We already have a contract in place with the Venish Engineering Company to do the last four, design, bidding, construction, engineering and project management, that was approved a couple meetings ago. So, on the construction, the total is three hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, which was, and KDOT shares ninety percent, three hundred twenty-two sixty-five oh eight, and the city's is ten percent of the amount, it's worth thirty-five thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and twelve cents. The total bid, by the way, was just slightly under what KDOT had predicted, so they did a very good job of estimating what it's gonna be. The design is entirely ours, as indicated, that's on Venish's contract, fifteen thousand three hundred ten dollars. The bidding, overseeing the bidding, which is what they did two weeks ago, I drove down to Clay Center, down to Manhattan, and attended the bid opening with them, representative from APAC was there for it. So, for that money, they prepared the bid documents and the contract documents, and sent them out to a list of bidders, and we received two bids on it, as noted, and they proceeded then to vet the bids and make sure they correctly covered all the items in them, and you have their recommendation about that in your packet. Construction engineering is the inspection phase of it, which they are also covered in their contract. That's a fifty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-dollar charge, KDOT's ninety percent, city's ten percent. Project management has to do with things like reviewing the contractor's pay requests, and that's seven, six thousand eight hundred seventy dollars. KDOT's ten, ninety percent, city's ten percent. So the city's outlay for this project is fifty-five, fifty-seven thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and twelve cents, for which we have provided in our capital improvement plan, we were basing our set aside for that in our budget on KDOT's estimates, and they turned out to be about right, so we have the money set aside to do this. KDOT will pay the rest. The contract calls for a startup very soon and being finished by December first. Finished means that the contract includes overlay and new striping and arrows and all that sort of stuff. So, this was handled completely by our engineers, and they do this sort of thing all the time. They are designated airport engineers of the Venish firm out of their Manhattan office. So if you want to go to the next slide, please, oops, go back to the slide. Does anybody have any questions about the numbers?
Now, the, yeah, the money will come out of the airport CPI, right?
Yes, and we, we kept enough in there to do that.
The other part I like about this project is, is that if we continue on with the overall airport plan, that then this runway will be used as the secondary runway, is that correct?
Yes, it'll be the taxiway.
Okay, so it, so it'll serve a future use also?
Yes, we're making this investment partly with that in mind, and you might recall that about a year ago, we learned that KDOT had done an inspection of various runways across the state, and ours scored very badly, and they thought it was a major project, a high priority project for me. So it definitely needs the overlay, and if it's done, then we're gonna continue on use as is, or if we do build a bigger runway, the bigger runway is planned to be located east of and parallel to the existing runway. The existing runway would then become a taxiway alongside it. So there are the two bids, as noted, with Hall Brothers being just slightly higher. I think the engineers remarked they were alike on everything except their staging cost, which is the cost of coming up here and setting up business, that sort of, there's a difference in their two bids. Could I, next page then, please? You've seen this cost breakdown, which is, sets out the various parts of the task as far as what they're doing for the money. If you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to cover. This is basically how it was bid, they bid out each of these items, and they're good. Go on to the next thing, please. Here's the actual proposal form, which was prepared by the bidder and reviewed by Venish as far as their bid. On the next one, please, keep going. And here's the contract. We have three different documents this evening, this contract, which as many engineering contracts do, makes a lot of references to other documents, and the plans and specifications, and various federal rules and regulations are all part of this contract, any change orders are part of it, all covered by the three hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty cents. With one proviso noted in my memo, which is that if the crack seal, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, stuff they put in, existing cement to seal cracks before they cover it over, that is based on an estimate of how much of that they're gonna need. The engineers think they might need a little less than that, they could need a little more. Engineers figure a very small, fairly small variance either way, but that's on a millennial foot or whatever they do with crack seal. And the other thing is, we are doing a project here, and sometimes projects have other stuff that comes up that nobody can foresee. That's always possible, but in this one, where everything's above ground to start with, you kind of don't expect too much to be a surprise.
Shouldn't find any walls this time.
Shouldn't be any walls, shouldn't be any buried anything out there that will, if there is, we won't have to dig it up. So we don't anticipate any unusual thing, but then I guess you have to do. So, that's the contract amount, so if you have questions, I'd entertain them at this time. If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the Venish prepared, excuse me, to approve the APAC contract.
Brian Donovan, is he pretty excited about this?
They've been in contact with him particularly about when to do it, and they're working within a window of time that won't interfere with his operation.
I'll, I'll move to approve the contract with APAC Kansas for three hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty cents for the airport runway overlay.
I'll second.
It's been moved by...
Lyle.
Lyle, thank you. The guy at the end. Seconded by Sam that we approve the contract for three, you said three hundred fifty-five eight fifty-one twenty?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Larry, I just like to tell you, I like the terms.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. I rather, they were good.
I guess the only question that comes to my mind, if, is there merit, if we're gonna do this other larger project, would it be better to put that money towards the, if this is gonna just serve as a taxiway, would it be better to put those funds into the larger runway and move forward with that as opposed to investing in this as a runway, just to, just to improve our taxiway?
Well, as of now, it's our runway, and likely to be so for a number of years. That's one side, and if we proceed with it, we will do this part anyway, we would have to overlay this anyway.
Even, even just to serve as a taxiway?
I think so, given its condition, I think we would have to do it anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, the, just sort of, what was that, I think just while I and I were on the commission at the time, but I think about four years ago, we did a pretty big study of the airport, and it's like a twenty-year plan, so, I mean, it would be still quite a few years in the future before a whole lot's done. And at that time, there was a big push to have a hospital out there and to improve things, and, and maybe, just maybe, this airport improvement doesn't have to be done right away, you know, I mean, it's, it's on the book, but, you know, I, I think this is a logical step towards that, but...
Fair, that's, that's fair.
In the meantime, I think we need this to keep our airport open.
Sure, that's just how projects in my house go, if I'm gonna do this, then I might as well do that, if I'm gonna do that, then...
The, the actual new runway, if we build that, is a very large project, and it's gonna demand a lot, it's, it's ten percent, it's going to be a striking figure.
Anticipating that, didn't know if it'd be better to save these pennies for that, those dollars, or...
That's why it's best to wait for twenty years.
But I think KDOT certainly identified this as needing to be done now, and if we're going to start running a problem with the airport as it is.
Fair enough.
Okay, we have an open motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And we're ready for the manager's report.
The only thing I really have to, for you this evening, is I'm pleased to let you know that Walmart has given the city a grant of a thousand dollars toward the seating for the Broadway Plaza. So, much appreciated, and we'll have a little presentation with them, photo opportunity I expect in the future.
Nick James for that. James is the new manager, right?
Yes, and I give Stacy credit here, she's the one that filed for the grant, and I just learned yesterday that we've received it. So, appreciate their generosity, and we'll see if it's spent.
Larry, would it be maybe a good thing to, not right now, but in a few months, maybe pull out the airport master plan, just so that...
Does your new, yeah, actually.
So the newer commissioners can kind of see where...
Yeah, I had spoken to Brad Waller, the airport engineer, about doing that sometime this fall, and so I can, getting down here and just, because there is, the, the actual plan is a very thick book, but it boils down really to a set of plans of what has been envisioned for out there. You're right, most of you aren't that familiar with it, so...
He's exaggerating just by a little.
Not a lot.
It's big.
Yes, yes. The actual plan is so big that we haven't tried to put it on, on the computer, but we have kind of a little digested part of it that shows that the plan is a lot like our, our comprehensive plan that has a lot of recitations about this or that at the airport. The Airport Advisory Board put all this together, and they were very thorough in their work. And I think gave us a good plan, it's just a question of where we're going to actually do it. The reason we bought all that real estate last year and year before is now we have all the real estate we need to do that plan. We'll show you how all that fits together, but I think it'd be wise to let the engineers come down and tell you about it. So, we'll set that up for sometime, maybe October, November, if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioner, comments and reports. I'm going to start, so that nobody takes my ideas. I just think that the Broadway Plaza's looking great. There's been a lot of hard work down there, and it represents a lot of money and a lot of work by a lot of people, and I'm really proud of it, so. Really excited about it. The, the sunflower just is kind of the crowning piece. I didn't think I would like it in the paint, but you know what, I like it in the paint, so.
They're painted, so, I haven't seen it yet.
Well, I've seen it painted, yeah.
Okay, good.
Again, if you look at it, what they did was ditched in the cement the outline, so, when someday they repaint it, it's gonna be...
Looks really good, and I appreciate all the energy and money that's been spent down there, so, it's really nice. Who wants to go next?
I will. I was contacted this week by someone, and maybe it would be a good idea, next meeting, to review our ATV on street policy, just...
Yes, I've had that same contact, and, and promised to sort out the law, I don't know that we have it anyway, but...
It sounds like it's working, what we currently have, but maybe it just needs to be aired what it is, and I'll encourage that person to come, and, you know.
We have, we have one owner who wants to be able to drive, and I think maybe more, who want to be able to drive their, what's called worksite utility vehicles, in larger ATV with side-by-side seating on Highway one, Highway nine. And I'm not certain if this, our ordinances and the state statutes are together for them. It's on my shortlist, and these kids... It's on my short list and needs to be figured out.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
A question on that. You know that ordinance allows them to drive, drive it, are they required to have safety belts and follow the same procedures?
Lights. Has to be street legal, the vehicle has to be street legal.
Brake lights, turn light signals.
Seat belts, turning signals.
Street legal, but can't be driven on highway. And I'm not certain whether we can permit ATVs on the highway. Probably can, but it's a little confusing to me. I've looked at one, but I'm going to go back.
Would it be like eighty-one then?
Yeah.
Or nine?
Right now, they're permitted to cross.
And this gentleman is a true businessman. I'm sure he used it for his business purposes and that's the whole thing, you know? We don't want recreational drivers driving up and down eighty-one, but that's how, he needs that to get to his work, to do, use that at work. Let's review what the state regs say and Fed, you know.
The state statute, I'll show you when we get to it, is kind of confusingly syntaxed. What if you try to parse it out? So I'll see what I can sort out on it and do it if we can and present something to you if we need to.
If not, we're trying to find a creative way to get there.
Jeremy, I've been approached by some people about they're upset about, you know, people are just leaving the clippings on the streets and the whole thing and they're not cleaning them up. Do that, those, do they affect the sewer systems, especially when we get a lot of rain and they, and they get washed down there?
Not, not my sanitary sewer system.
Storm drain.
Yeah, your storm drains and the whole thing?
A lot of times the grass collectives will get caught in grates and usually when it rains, we go around and clean it up.
So it's costing the city?
Well, they put the grates on there to catch all the trash and stuff, you know? So if there's trash there, we need to pick it up. We're trying to keep from the stuff getting to the river and stuff like that, so. I've really never had no trouble with it. I've had people call me, they've duffed them down in a drain, went and checked, it never found nothing, but, I mean, they'll pile up on the top of the grates and then.
You know, I get a, I get a water bill from Kansas City, Kansas Public Utilities and this time there was a little orange insert, about that big, that asked people to get, to not blow them into the street because of that exact reason, exactly what you're talking about.
That might be something we could put a flyer out in the water bills.
We could also make that a nuisance.
I, I think, I don't, I think that it, it would, because it's, it's blasted with voices and I, but personally, I don't, I think it's, I don't think it portrays the image of Concordia that we want to portray, but I think that, you know, a couple, you know, you, if I'm pushmowing along the side and some grass gets over there, I, I get my blower out and blow it back into my yard, but, but I'm thinking about the ones that just dump. I mean, it almost looks like an inch, three quarters to an inch of clippings, about two, three feet out. To me, I think that would almost be covered under, could, could we get that as littering?
I think that we would probably need to add to our ordinance, like grass clippings on the street.
I just didn't know if there's, if, if we had a current vehicle for that.
Probably not, that would probably, and there are cities that do prohibit this, and there's some lines that are.
Well, somebody brought that, brought it up to me years ago and probably four or five years ago and, and their major concern was actually safety. They were kind of afraid that, you know, they might, you know, you hit that grass and they try to stop and they're more skid than anything.
Or kids on bikes and motorcycles.
A lot, a lot of that's, you know, common courtesy thing, but, but, you know.
And grassy.
Obviously, people aren't following that.
Yeah, and grassy some years. I mean, most of the time, everything's dry and there's nothing growing around here, but, I mean, years that are, I mean, you know, I go with Chris, I mean, just the way, way it makes looks the city, plus the fact is it creates extra work and possibly safety. I just think it's something we should discuss.
I'll see if I can come up with, with the ordinance. Do we need to be something different than our ordinary nuisance enforcement? Probably, maybe not, but our, our, by law with our nuisance enforcement, the first step is to notify people and we, we have an extra step to run out a courtesy letter that we can send out. But it may be that if we have the ordinance changed, put the flyer in, remind people every spring, we'll get a lot of voluntary compliance.
Kristi, the note, did it refer to some ordinance against a lot?
No ordinance, I don't think.
Just replying people.
I think I still have it. I meant, I said it aside and meant to bring in, I forgot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I, I think it looks horrible, it makes, I think the guy who's mowing the lawns lazy or whatever, you know, you just have all these thoughts. But on the other hand, as hot as it is, three days later, it's gone, you know? Dries up, blows away, whatever. And so, but, but you're right, it looks bad, but on the other hand, again, compliance was going to be the consequence. We're going to send out mower patrol to, to, you know, find people.
I think it's another, it's another thing to enforce.
Yeah, that is another thing to enforce. I just wonder if, you know, the, the note in the water bill might not be, it might be worth trying that.
I agree.
Although at this point in the year, I mean, we're hopefully almost past.
I think it's going to be more until November.
It may happen.
We've got, we've got at least two more months.
You think?
I mean, if everything, if, if the water turned off today, I think we've got at least two more months.
Of glowing. I'll give that note to you and you can take a look at it.
Yeah, that's, of course I have.
When's your next billing come out?
I don't know.
Okay.
I know.
That's, that's good.
And you know, the area that Chuck was talking about is, I mean, that thick, it's almost like, it's the guy, people don't take care of their lawns till it gets up there and then they come in and whack it and it's all over the street. You never see that around the houses where people are taking care of their lawns, but it's the ones that they're renters or something and it gets up here, so they go whack it down and it just goes in the street. And, and that's what I think is what we're seeing.
Well, and what they're thinking is that, okay, if they throw it back towards the yard, then they have to re-mow it, whereas, and if they let it go too high, but yeah, it's common courtesy.
But I heard, I heard this one woman saw, heard this guy do it, because she told me that. And the guy looked at her and says, "City, clean it up." And that was, that was his comment.
Send photos of their neighbors' grass putting it straight to our bucket.
Oh, yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
You know, and here's the thing, to me, it seems like that if, okay, if we do pass an ordinance, it's got to be more complaint-driven than anything because Ron doesn't have time to drive around, you know? Megan doesn't have time to just drive around looking for grass clippings, but if a person calls, then we can go look at it and see if there is a.
Again, all I'm saying is, the cost of the city, clean it up, that's it.
I, I think that there's some first steps to take, see if it becomes an issue and then if it, if we find that next spring it's, it's an ongoing issue, then we can come back at it, maybe do a little more heavy hitting, but a friendly reminder that.
I think that's.
That's the best way to go.
Really just, even if you're on a rider, you could take a couple passes pointed towards the interior and then you get around and you can spread it out over the grass that's there and it's not, it's not that hard.
Okay, any other?
Sometimes it is.
Well, honestly, one day I was driving past the park and whoever was mowing at the park was doing that exact thing and I thought, you know, I'm sure they're going to take care of that, and I'm sure they did, because I haven't noticed it.
That's where you go then, along the road and blow everything back towards the curb.
Yeah, I just, I'm sure that it was taken care of, so. Did you have anything, any, either of you?
I shared enough.
Okay.
Surprisingly, I'm good.
And.
Excuse me, program staff, I did have one other thing I need to cover with you, which is the league meeting is coming up here in a few weeks and we are asked to designate voting delegates, three of them. And this year, since the three people going are Commissioner Lambert, Commissioner Sacco and me, I suggest that you vote to, you vote to name the three of us as voting delegates to the 2016 Kansas City Municipalities meeting. I don't know if anybody ever actually votes on it, but they like to have this done. I think they need to sort of have a reauthorization.
Ball motion that Sam, Chuck and Larry have the authority to vote at the League of Municipalities.
Second it. It's been moved by Tim and seconded by Kristi that we appoint Sam, Chuck and Larry as our voting delegates to the League of, Kansas League of Municipalities Annual Meeting. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We've been elected again.
They probably won't let me vote.
Have to stay to the very last bit, because that's a, that's a tough one. The beginning is at the very end.
Okay, any staff comments?
I've got some pictures of the new pool lights on at the pool, so I'm going to show them to you.
Oh.
That's what's on there. I think they made it a lot brighter down there.
I agree. Just driving by it, man.
I know in the past, Ron, that, that they kept the water in the pool so that the high school and junior high could use them up through about the first week of September. Now, that, that, that's changed what about five, six years ago, is that more of a, that's a maintenance type thing?
Well, at the first, we were keeping the pool open on them weekends before that, but our attendance was so low and our, attendance was low and our chemical cost doesn't go down any because your son reaches it out and everything, so. And we still got to have people that are maintaining it, so we said, cut the cost and close it early.
All right, and the school didn't want to pay the cost of the chemicals, if I remember right, too, and so that was it.
That's true, too. I'm worried about that. We ask them that.
Their share.
Looks sharp, though.
Yeah, it does.
It's nice. Even when you drive by there now, it almost looks like there's no lights out there, because you can't, you know, you ain't got them big globes out there now, it's more streamlined and it looks pretty good.
Yes, it does.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Gets I've driven by that, huh?
Last week, Melville contacted me, contacted me and wanted some help with, they had a sewer backup and they asked if we could bring down our vac truck. So I sent Paul down there with the vac truck and he cleaned 600 feet of their line and got everything going for him again and they're really appreciative of that, so. And we have a, I think it's an ordinance of rental for the vac truck, which is $200 an hour plus labor for the, the guy running it and fuel, so they will get a bill for it. And I let them know beforehand, so. They had contacted another company to come and do it and they just kind of pushed him, pushed him back and didn't show, and then they did show three days later and, and his name's John Puckett.
Yeah.
Yeah. He was not happy with what they did or wanted us to just make sure that they had done what he asked them to do, so we went down there and we spent about two hours down there, so.
Sure, they appreciated it.
Yeah. And classic detail, they're, today we killed the sewer and water to the classic details so they can get it tore down.
Did we get our, the thing, I think, I can't remember how long ago we voted on it.
The or?
Yeah, did all that get installed?
Not yet. It's, Hoods is still waiting on the last piece from the manufacturer. I guess production is slow or, it's either slow or they're just backed up that far. I would think that something like that would be on the shelf, pick it up, send it out, but it's in production, so.
Just make yourself a nuisance and call, call every day.
Well, they keep, have you ever seen the movie Money Pit?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, that's what they keep telling us.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Any else? Okay.
Elected Commissioners, our changeover to the Next Generation 911 has been pushed back to tentative Lee November 17th.
Anyone else? I think we've about hit everybody. Okay, at this time, then, do you still need an executive session?
We could have 10 minutes executive session for non-elected persons.
Inviting you and who?
Just me.
Okay.
I'd move to, I guess, move for an executive session, inviting Mr. Urie for a period of 10 minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by Chuck and seconded by Tim that we enter into executive session and invite Larry Urie for a period of 10 minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
No, but, 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 well.
It wasn't Brad.
Thank you for the new car commissioners and no action.
It feels sad.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, at this time, let's have a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn to a study session?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. To our study session.
Yeah, I'll have one, that sounds good, too.
Okay, I'll do.
Thanks for coming, Toby.
Yeah, thank you, Toby.
Brad, are you and Bill about the same age?
No, he's a little younger than I am.
Is he?
Yeah.
He would have graduated in 58, I think, so.
Is that 18 or 19?
Mayor Commissioners, these are specs for vehicles that were stolen from a sports complex. I don't know if Larry's informed you or not, that he wanted me to bring this to you and I specked it out exactly what we had on both of these. Open to take it out, get it bid and get a couple new ones.
Any, any, have we had any luck with them finding out the money?
I don't, I haven't heard, I have nothing.
Do we have any surveillance cameras?
Not out there.
Is that something we probably should look at?
Well, this is the first time it ever happened to me out there, but.
Now, now it happened once, the odds are it could happen again.
Yeah.
Who's that? I was talking with somebody that said they were, they were broken into and the first thing they did was cut the surveillance and steal the camera.
Oh, yeah.
That happened to us at the hangar.
Okay, maybe that's.
Thanks, yeah, those, you know, unless they're up where you just can't get to them, I mean.
A lot of them, I think you can though, Chuck, you can, depends on where you place them, I mean, you put them right there, they can look at it.
You got to use some compensation.
Do, I mean, I know this isn't your area, but have we heard anything about compensation from our insurance for this?
They put in a claim.
We have put in a claim.
They told me, I can go and purchase everything except for the pickup with the, and I had two fuel tanks in the pickup, too, there was 50 gallon fuel tanks.
Oh.
So.
Do they have fuel in them, too?
What's that?
They were filled with fuel or?
Yes.
Of course.
Well, for insurance purposes, they were absolutely full, they were full as they could be.
Of course they were.
And nice pumps on them and.
Were they hotwired the truck?
They were topped to the top.
Were they hotwired the truck?
No, the keys were in the truck, it was locked in a shed out there, so they broke into the shed and got into it.
Is that why the insurance company said, "Don't hold off on buying a new vehicle"?
I don't know, she just didn't have the authority to approve that yet or not, I'm guessing then. Because, I mean, I got a pretty good list here, I had, you know, a Toro push mower, a steel weed eater, 18 volt drill, Milwaukee grinder, mower blades, chain and there's some base plugs, 100 foot tape and a leaf blower out there that they got the first night.
That's just to me, seems so risky because that, that stuff, I mean, I mean, I'll have to go somewhere else to sell it.
Right.
It's.
Farm sale.
Based on your experience, chief, this. Based on your experience, chief, would this be a local or somebody passing through Highway 81 slipped over, took off, and now are Canada?
Well, I doubt if it's in Canada, even if it is, anything with a make, model, serial number has been entered into the NCIC computer, and the Canadians do use that same system, so if it goes to Canada and they run it up there, we catch it.
At least, if they get pulled over or something.
Does it sound like a local thing, or?
Well, I'd rather not comment on active investigation.
Sure. Of course.
Well, and from what you said, Larry, you guys have kind of changed.
Been an educational opportunity.
The keys aren't, can't be left in the.
Some of the things that we had where we were teaching the vehicles, or, because we had these, oh, we tried to, yeah, we're still vulnerable.
Oh, yeah, anywhere is.
Yeah, you have a bunch of equipment stored in one central location, but that's the way you do it.
I mean, if they wanted to, they could probably take a crowbar and go down to the city shop and go in there and break doors open and steal tools, you know, stuff like that, I mean.
Where there's a will, there's a way.
Yeah. Why don't we keep the, you know, let's work hard, so we don't have to work. Yeah, on the water thing.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Brian is the.
And they're the ones that we're not talking about.
Is the other one down there, is it at least wired? Someone to break it or something, it's silo alarm or something, go out system.
Like the city shop?
Yeah.
No.
They have to answer when they.
You're right, anyone could just go down there and break into it.
I've asked, please chief and fire chief to undertake a security review of our premises and make any recommendations.
Very good, thank you.
Sure.
Is there any money spent, long term, long term, is worth?
See what the, see what the cause of pain is.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So, will the, would, do we have to pay for it and then we get reimbursed, is that?
That's what I'm guessing. She told me to send one bill for all this stuff I got here at one time, so once I send these bids out, I'll probably start ordering and getting some of this other stuff, too.
What is our deductible?
I think it's a thousand.
Okay.
In May. Six thousand.
Miniature pool insurance, that.
We're insured at all those places.
See how good it.
We'll test that out.
The premium was $50,000 less than the local bid, but.
But we really haven't had much of a claim on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Since we've started, have we?
There was a lot of assistance, but we really haven't claimed it.
Well, I've claimed a couple times on Traffic Light 11 and.
Oh, yeah.
Lincoln, that was 13,000. Well, it's still in there, I finished doing some of the paperwork the other day that they wanted, so hopefully they get back to us.
What happened the other day, Ron, I think we had two or three lights out, did they, and they were doing?
Sixth and Broadway and Seventh and Broadway, that was, the power company replaced a pole there, they shut the power down, and when they got the pole back in and everything, the water, they turned it back on. That's all it was.
Our current insurance is responsive, you call and you get a call back, and there's been a couple times, if I have a serious personnel matter, I can call your attorneys that specialize in that and talk to them, if they're not, anything.
It's a pretty common thing anymore, I, like, I actually, we have a policy that, and I'm able to call and get professional advice, pretty much, and it's helpful.
We'll bring these prices back to you, these utility vehicle and this mower, probably the first meeting in October.
In October?
Yes.
Are you able to get your work done without these?
I had to pull, I had a, a John Deere Gator up to the cemetery, I had to pull it, which I used it more in the summertime with the kids and stuff, and I took it out there, and then I had to just take and rob another truck from somewhere so he could drive it. So, yeah, I'm able to do it, it's a little slower, but, because we had two mowers out there, and now we only got one.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, just to preface Eric a little bit, you've seen in the packet options to either, we had, had an ambulance go out, and we have an option of replacing it with a used one or repairing the one that we had, but we now got Plan C that we'd like to talk to you about a little bit.
What we had is a 2008 Road Rescue ambulance, has the Ford six cylinder, or six-oh motor in it, and we blew it coming back from a transfer, so we didn't have a patient onboard. It's gonna cost about $22,000 to put a new engine in that, because they have to disassemble the whole front of the ambulance to put it in, it's not just a drop in easy like a pickup. We found this ambulance in 1995, so it's 21 years old, which an ambulance lifespan's supposed to be about 15 to 20 years. It only has 26,000 miles on it, it's got the 7.3 diesel engine, it's pretty comparable to Medic 3 that we have out there now with a lot less miles. They'll sell it to us for $10,000 as is. Some major concerns about that is we're buying a 21-year-old ambulance, and they're only supposed to last 15 to 20 years. The motor's good in it, but that's a major concern with that, but we're trying to bring up some different options. The other option is to repair it, like I said, or the final option is to go with, this is some pictures of that 21-year ambulance inside it. The other one is to go with Osage, and this is a remount that they could do, which is taking the box off of the blown motor ambulance, putting it onto a new chassis. The problem with that is it's gonna be about eight months before that would be done, their lead time. To do that would cost about $81,100 for Osage. The other option we have is to buy a Ford Transit vehicle, which the paid transport companies are using a lot for their long-distance transfers, they ride nicer, that kind of stuff. It's basically like a FedEx van, we've got some pictures of it, but they have a demo on stock right now with 7,000 miles on it, they had it here about a month and a half, two months ago, for $85,885.
How many miles are on that one?
On this one, about 7,000.
7,000.
It's just been going around, letting people see it.
Okay.
It's an option that they have, it wouldn't be customized, it'd be a totally different ambulance than what we use, it would not be used for, it'd be our fourth out for emergencies, and they're real compact in the back, so doing 911 calls in them, it makes it pretty conducive, not conducive to, for the patient or the techs. So what we was looking at is we could get something like this and run it down the highway, they get a lot better fuel mileage than the heavy boxes, and Life Team has been using them for their transport, ground transports, and are loving them.
So this would be really more kind of the, I mean, the commuter of the ambulances, not the, not the heavy duty.
It's on a, it's got dual wheels, it's a heavier truck, kind of like FedEx, but it's a lot safer, it passes more safety tests than the box do, but it's, doesn't have the room, if we can go to the pictures of it. These are the schematics of it, I mean, and the best way to explain it to somebody is it looks like the FedEx, you know, little drive-around trucks, those types of things, but it's completely set up for fire, for EMS, with all of our shelving, our seats, O2, everything that we need inside.
What was our rotation, when were we gonna buy a ambulance in the picture?
We've actually purchased one, that's supposed to be coming in, and we're supposed, it's supposed to be done in December timeframe, to replace our old unit, which now we're looking at Medic, having it replace Medic 2, it's a 6.02 that is beginning to smoke and everything, just like this 2008 did, and we're concerned that we're gonna blow the motor in it, too. These 6.0 motors have got problems with their injectors and turbos, we've put new injectors in that, and we just continuously are spending money repairing them. What we originally was planned when I first came here is they wanted to do a, basically a remount, and we put that off for three years, we ordered this new one, was hoping everything would get by, and then the Violet Blue is actually our second newest ambulance, but we're running a lot of highway miles, doing transfers now, too.
That, that, to me, almost makes this the most logical purchase, if, if we're burning them out doing these high-mile transfers, and let's get something that's efficient for a high mile, and then we save our boxes for.
The 911s.
Mm-hmm.
That's what AMR, Life Team, the people that are actually doing real long transfers, private companies, this is what they're going to, and that's because they're finding it's better, and they're a cheaper unit. A box style, you know, baseline's gonna be 180 to 200,000, as we've seen in the quotes that we're getting in December, and these we can run into for about 80 to 90,000.
What would be your choice of the options?
My choice of the options would be to go with this. My plan, and we had talked about in the department, in two to three years, as time progressed, to come back and get one of these, because of the transfers and the safety factors in it, but we blew the motor, and concern is, is Medic 2, which is the third oldest ambulance right now, is smoking just like this one, so the plan is, with my guys, to keep Medic 3, which is actually the oldest, but it's got that same 7.3 diesel engine in it, it's a better motor, and the guys feel it's a more reliable truck.
Would we get any salvage value in the, when we blew the engine?
Out of the one we blew the engine, the company says it's worth about $1,000.
Really?
Even, because it's a 6.0, even the one that's running is about 3,000 to 4,000. On Purple Wave and stuff, you see them go for that 4,000 to 6,000 if they're running a blown motor.
The box isn't worth anything, then, huh?
The box is worth about 1,000 to 2,000 dollars, they'll take it and then put it on another chassis and sell to somebody that's in this kind of predicament, and make them a boxed one for, you know, 80 to 90,000 range.
But it takes eight months.
They have to pay to have it hauled there and everything else, most of the time when they do those, it's still somewhat drivable, if you drove to the factory.
How many miles did we have on it?
88,000.
How fast do we run those down the highway when we're going to Salina?
How fast are we going? Depends on the call, if it's non, if the patient's stable, we do the speed limit, if the patient's in bad shape, we can make it to Salina in about 37 minutes.
Okay.
So, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, you're not really, that's, I mean, that's what, about 90?
85, usually, is about what they tap out at.
Somebody's life's involved.
Yeah.
I mean, the perfect example is we had that wreck on Union Road and 81, the girl got hit by us, and from the time we got on scene to cut out, what you have in her at Salina's door, the trauma center she needed to go to is 56 minutes, from the time we got on scene, cut out to the door.
She's doing very well. She, she's worked for me, and she's back working for us, and.
That golden hour.
That golden hour, that's what we're after, I mean.
How, how long would it take to get this new one?
This one that we're looking at, it's done, they'd have to do the graphics on it, talking to the salespeople and stuff, we could pick it up in October when we go down and do our mid-build inspection, so.
Where do we have the funds?
That's the issue, and that's where we turn it over to the.
Amber has a hat, she's gonna.
A printing press in the back there.
No rabbit, we want money.
I had thought we were probably going to have to suggest a lease purchase, basically an installment contract to you, but Amber is approved on that, so.
I didn't do anything, except for, except for, this is our equipment reserve fund, the gray, I guess I could use. The gray is the ambulance slash fire department, and this is the current year where he sits $254,400. The ambulance that we've already approved is $231,900 and maybe less, according to him, no? And that will come out, actually, in December, and then this one we're talking about, around 85,000, just put that in, he's only getting, since we cut our equipment reserve transfers next year, $35,700, so that would be a negative $26,792 in his portion of the equipment reserve fund at the end of next year. He doesn't have any current needs that he knows of in the near future, and the fund itself generally maintains at least a $200,000 balance, so the negative would then be a positive in 2018, assuming he didn't need anything else. So basically, we're floating it through the equipment reserve fund.
Can you run him negative balance in that line item there, is, in the whole?
Yeah.
Okay. Good, okay.
And basically, the financing that we looked at was gonna have interest of 25,000 over the four years, so.
So he might as well self.
If we could float it through there, that would be as much.
Yeah.
Will we have to pass any, anything on that?
No, but like an ordinance or.
No, no, an ordinance or.
Publish our budget.
No, this isn't a budget.
Okay.
Okay.
I'd say do it that way, I mean, if Eric's happy with it, that's, he's the one that knows what needs to be done.
And, and from what you're, I mean, this, this seems like a, that by doing this, too, I guess my hope, knock on wood, is that then it would maybe help relieve some of the pressure of the one that, that the engine's a little.
The, the intention is when we get the new one in December, January, that we're gonna get rid of that one. We sent it on a transfer yesterday because the other one was getting serviced, the 7.3, and it was caused by the breakdown, I mean, and that's.
So we're that close?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
I would not trust it to get in the vehicle and go very far, it's a last resort vehicle right now.
Any value in that one?
That one's about $3,000.
Well, there's three and there's four, that takes that down.
That takes it down a little bit, I mean, and that's what we'll do, is we will.
Now, the 22.
Make one diamond, yeah.
Purple Wave, that you try to do.
A $20,000 vehicle decreases to.
The companies that deal with them are saying with 6.0s, we're better off selling it privately, because emergency services are trying to get out of that 6.0, but your plumbers, your contractors, those types of people, will still buy them and have a use for them.
No, you won't be, you won't be short one then.
No, we're short one right now.
Right.
But in 30 days, if we can do this, we would not be short.
Say, no.
That makes sense to me.
I think so, too.
She'd have wide for 10,000, how cheap could you get that one for?
That one, he's pretty stuck on 10,000.
Just tell him this lifespan is gone.
Just, his thing is the same thing, it's because it's got that 7.3 diesel.
Has value.
I mean, my personal truck, I had 300,000 miles on it, and I traded it in with that 7.3, and they gave me 11,000 for it, just because people want that 7.3 diesel motor, that's what they're paying for.
It'd be kind of nice if you could pick that one up a little cheaper, then we got an extra one, and you could use it back and forth.
Biggest problem.
We'll have a city vehicle and a highway vehicle.
Yeah.
Well, and.
See if you can get that guy 10,000 down more.
Financing.
Get him down to 9,900.
I was thinking eight or seven.
That'd be a conversation for you to have, Sam.